Maybe. And they are run there. Ready? Well. Right. The seven oh one Hall of New York. Regular meeting of Hall of Planning Commission Wednesday, March nineteenth. First item is in team to be again the. I don't have anything. Thank you. Anything else?
Hmm.
All right. We're going to take this and approve. Um, I don't think some evidence. I think she did.
I had a door Wednesday February actually.
I haven't had a chance to look at that.
I am.
So I'm just going to propose table not even been there on that once again to be both. That's. I apologize.
Oh, we'll get the.
She just joined by the way.
We're here. Hi, Faith. Um, we just, uh, table for, um, on it on approval of the next. Well, maybe we don't have a chance to review the program pick it up next month. Um, we are definitely moving on to your report. Do you have one? You're going to hear us.
Uh, yes, I do have a report. Um.
Yeah, one second. All right, come down again.
Uh, is that better?
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, um, so, uh, on BCRs, I haven't received any, but I have sent a couple of, um, reminders to people who are obviously doing construction and who haven't submitted one. That's, um, Murray on one oh three South and, uh, Litwiler on Belmont Road. Um, I have also, um, sent out, um, a letter to the Blue Spruce Inn, um, making sure that they are aware of the fact that, uh, they shouldn't do any kind of construction, uh, without at least, uh, asking, uh, whether or not they are able to, given the location of the, of the property. Uh, I also let them know that there are in fact two, um, uh, decisions by the fire marshal to, um, uh, prevent occupancy. Uh, I also gave them, uh, the details of, um, any requirements for, um, a public building in terms of inspections. I haven't received any response from them on that. Um, I also have not received responses on the other letters that I sent out to, um, the, uh, to, to Dean Armstrong regarding the, um, uh, RV, um, camper van, uh, at Tarbelville Road. Um, the next thing is just to let you know, coming down the pike, uh, I have received most of the elements for the Garrow subdivision to be considered complete. I just need to follow up with Bob on a couple of things. So I imagine that, um, at the next meeting, um, we will want to prepare, want to present that.
Uh, I don't know what's happening. I'm trying to figure that out right now.
Would you would signal that look there, excuse me?
What's that? Can you get a look at that letter?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I can, I can, I can hear you all. I just can't see you. All I'm seeing is a no signal.
If you can hear us, we, um, we lost the signal there for a bit. Uh, if you hold on, we're. Can you guys hear us?
We, we can hear you.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can hear us. Um, they got, because of that loss, they got rerouted back here. Give me a moment. All right. Faith, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Cool. Okay.
All right, we're back running here. Sorry, that, uh, Faith, if you can pick up where you left. If you, where did you move on?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, the Garrow subdivision, uh, I think will be coming to us at the next planning commission meeting. Um, and then the final thing on my list is, uh, the patch flood hazard area, um, permit application. Uh, there's been some discussion with the state authorities, uh, Kyle Medash has advised. Um, we now have a way forward, which is that this application will need to go to the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit. So, um, my main question really is on timing. Um, and whether or not the Board of Adjustment would like to meet before the next regular planning commission meeting. Or if there is an alternative time, which we can agree would also work for Marvin Patch.
Guess we're going to have to meet before that, but I have no idea at the present time what is coming off. You know, or what the issue is or what.
Uh, I, I will, I will of course send you all the documents, but basically, um, Mr. Patch is reconstructing, uh, on the original foundation. But he is constructing to, uh, uh, an elevation that would put the property above the, um, flood elevations required in the, uh, in the bylaw. Uh, and he already has a conditional letter of map adjustment issued by FEMA. And once we, assuming we do issue a permit for him, he would construct according to the specifications of the bylaw and his current proposal. Um, and then FEMA would confirm that he did that.
Oh, that would be good.
I, uh. Okay, ask her to just waiver to stop. It looks like she, it looks like she knows. Okay, she knows, she knows.
Can she still hear us?
Yes.
Yes, she can.
Yeah, sorry, can you, can you hold on?
I'm just going to wiggle all these connections while it's, while I can hope, hope for the best here.
Um.
Uh, hold on, Faith.
Okay.
It says no EPMI signal. So.
Maybe they're new David.
Well, I can tell you, I can see and hear you.
This cable being tired.
I'm gonna reboot the transmitter here.
Yeah, maybe.
It's usually the wire position.
Building out all.
Yeah, I was just pulled on.
Yeah, I'm very. Why it's not done.
Well, that's nothing, yeah.
Uh, I'm always been.
Uh, did you turn the TV back on? Is it, is it?
This.
No, it's, it's trying.
There. Might have to do the other.
Yeah. Okay, can you speak, Faith, to see if we've got you in the right audio?
Uh, do you have me in audio?
Yeah, I'm good. No problem.
Okay.
You got what right after, I think it was, you know, approved the.
You were out there about how to, you were talking about questioning the timeline to refer to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, the, so basically, um, I mean, I, I, I will obviously provide the Board of Adjustment all the details. But the, uh, the process is that the, that FEMA have provided a conditional letter of map adjustment. And once the construction has taken place according to the, uh, rules set out in the permit, um, FEMA would then issue a letter of map adjustment, which effectively moves the structure outside the flood hazard area. And this is something that in our bylaw, I can't do as an administrative permit. It has to be done by the Board of Adjustment. Which is why we need to organize a hearing.
Right, so before, before construction begins, they, they, um, Pat, Mr. Pat, can you say conditional use permit? Is that correct?
Sorry, I can't, I, I, I can't really hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Let's see.
Yeah. Yeah, that's better.
You're at max volume here, so.
So my understanding is that Mr. Pat will need a conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustment before beginning any construction.
Yes.
Okay, so I think when you, this is our opinion, my opinion, personal opinion as author of the, you know, the authors of the bylaw, but we don't have, um, authority on, on this matter here. Um, but my understanding, my, my memory probably wrote it was that when you determine their application is complete, and I don't even know, you have an application form, I don't remember if you put one together, something. Uh, but when the application for conditional use permit is complete, it's then formally, uh, referred to the Board of Adjustment and hearing instead.
Yeah, and, and the application is now complete. Um, but just in terms of trying to organize the process, um, it would be helpful to me to know, uh, when the Board of Adjustment would be able to meet, because I have to warn the hearing, um, and I'm not back in town until the thirtieth of March. Um, but, but it, it's, it's possible to do all of this, uh, assuming we can agree a time now or in the next few days.
Well, I don't think we can think that there, there, they're actually afraid to give it for them, the Board of Adjustment. They believe it's the two of you and David.
David, Christine.
Christine.
And.
They're all. They're all.
Only credit which Steve and I and Christine. Oh, Christine. They're all good.
Sort of by coincidence, it's for a little bit back committee here, so you have to give a little careful. Um, but the way it should probably work is, I don't know if you have a meeting.
No. They had an organization meeting.
So you have to hold a meeting instead of the hearing. Another hearing can be approached and they think we literally helped you out.
Right, I haven't taken that, so I'll probably hear and approach that.
Yeah, so.
So I didn't. I mean, they had the whole one. They have to.
So, yeah, so you guys need to warn already when you need receive the application, decide enough themselves when the hearing is going to be. Mm-hmm. That whole year, just like I said. Nothing to redo here. Not thinking, I mean, feel free to, you know, be like, share an agreement or anything.
Yeah, I can, I can share everything electronically, although the electronic versions of some of the maps don't come out very well, and I know also that Christine doesn't, um.
No, that is not a major problem.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I will then communicate with you and ask you when you're going to schedule a meeting. Um, and then we can take it forward from there in terms of scheduling the hearing.
You have an email address that we're going to get from you?
No.
Like you were considering that? For that, you know, everything goes to one. Now, Faith, if it's done, it will, you know. If I get it done, it will, all right. That could be done to, I believe there's left, and, uh, it's the same. You know, it must be different. And that way you have the proper channel, like, to, you know, the email.
I'm afraid I can't hear you unless you speak into the microphone somewhere.
I'm suggesting that, um, my, you know, my personal suggestion is that the Board of Adjustments come up with an email address at, you know, about holiday, ut.org, just like the planning person has. So that you, as you've been a developer, have a, you know, a proper channel for sending them things. But I, I believe the select court, um, at least paper news deal that I assume the new one can as well.
Well, anyone still, I am temporarily.
Okay.
That's not a major problem.
Okay, please, is there anything else on that?
Uh, no.
Should we wait for him to come back or would it be? Now, I think we got what, uh, properly.
It'll be on the.
Warn it. I got a, the note for her, the meeting, wait a second, trying to remember the order. We gotta have a regular meeting so that we can warn.
Mm-hmm.
Well, okay, I knew I got it all. Warn the regular meeting, at which point we determine, well, we're going to have a public hearing.
Hmm?
Are you the chair of it?
Yeah, so.
Stephen.
No, I was just wondering who the chair was, because I was going to say that if you weren't the chair, you didn't have to worry about ordering everybody.
You do, it's not. Um, and I'm trying to think what other timeframe. Uh, so like five days in advance. Uh, to be planning a meeting to like, or better word, to then warn for the public hearing uh, for this issue. And that would be another five days at a minimum?
Uh, no, that's at least fifteen days, and it would also have to go to the Vermont Journal, which makes it a bit more than.
Okay, so then he'll be back by then.
He'll be back by then.
Uh, yes.
The day is nineteen.
Okay, so five days plus fifteen would be twenty days. You'll be back by then?
Uh, I will definitely be back, um, but, uh, I will need an official channel to communicate to you about the application.
Yeah, but wait, wait, you can do that. I'll be back, we can do that tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, so well, let's, let's leave this for discussion between you, you guys. Um, have you got anything else today?
No.
Okay, I have, um, something that came to you on your, on your desk. I don't know, I don't know if you've seen yet, probably came after, let's see.
Came today.
It came today, so I guess you haven't seen it. No.
Today, the nineteen, it was posted the nineteen.
Then, hmm, received, received the nineteen, yeah. So a letter dated March thirteenth, postmarked the seventeenth, and received the nineteenth. From Chris Schneider.
Uh, yes.
Um, are you aware of this issue?
Uh, yes, and sorry, I should have mentioned that, so, uh, two weeks ago, the last time I was in the town office, um, Carol forwarded to me or gave to me a note from Mr. Schneider, saying that he wanted to get the forms to do a subdivision of his property. Um, I checked and he does not own the property. And I understand that there is some, uh, language in the deeds of the property saying that his former wife, um, has full and total control over it. So I responded to him, saying that it was my understanding that he did not own the property, and therefore I could not send him any application form for a subdivision.
Excellent. If you, off the top of your head, do you know who the owner is?
Sorry, off.
You, if you off the top of your head, you know the name of the owner?
Uh, it is, uh, his former wife, um, uh, off the top of my head, no, but I can, I certainly could find out. Uh, I believe her name is Heidi. I'm not sure what her other name is. I don't know if the content of the letter that you've received is the same as the one that he sent earlier.
Perfect, very clear. Well, what similar, how's that? Um, here to be demanding to know why the property had changed hands. Uh, I, I certainly that it has changed hands. Where it's been backed from though. And, and I guess, um, further, that was in the, thirteen of March and the fourteen of March. Is, um, I guess sort of implying that there needs to be a law, there's some time, the term involved in.
Sorry, implying, implying what?
There's an attorney, implying there's an attorney involved. And it being now, quote unquote, a civil matter. Um, so I think since there is credible lawsuit, we need to send this to the Select Board. So I'll stand this in. And, uh, I don't know how seriously they take it, but I think it's a kind of a, they have, they run the town, they have a right to know. Yeah, I think it's in the, yeah, we don't want to be having to hold it, I think, so.
Okay, and I.
I'll, I'll stand it in and send it to you and the Select Board.
Yeah, I have copies, I have, I have copies of the letter that I sent to him as well, um. There is, I don't know if you were aware, but there is some history of antagonism from Mr. Schneider towards town.
I am aware of some of that, we don't need to get into that today, but.
Right.
I, I just want to raise the issue on the record. Um, and would you mind sharing the materials that you have or information you have about the, that you received from the Fire Marshal regarding the Blue Spruce?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, some of that. I can certainly send you the most recent email that I got from them. Um, one of the issues regarding the Blue Spruce property is that there were three buildings. Um, and in the two, um, Fire Marshal's reports, it's a bit unclear to me which of the three buildings they are referring to. But, um, I can forward what I have.
All right, well, if you can send it around, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we'll move on to my report if you're all set.
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, I guess sort of tagging on to your comment about the, uh, Garrow subdivision, almost the local subdivision permitting process, um, almost ready to begin, to start. Um, we have now received a recorded copy of the Act two fifty, any permit for the subdivision to authorize the subdivision to go forward from the state for you um, last year. I think, I think I sifted around my cognitive, but they've now reported it. Um, and we also have a series of maps, I don't know if you saw those, if those arrived before you. Regarding the subdivision, uh, I believe these were all produced for Act two fifty. Um, I hope you're able to see them on the computer. On the table.
I will.
I, I did ask, uh, Mr. Garrow for an electronic copy of the subdivision map. He did not, he hasn't sent me one, which is part of.
It's possible, all of them, they may already be electronic in Act fifty, but.
Yeah, I have, I have the, uh, the wetlands maps electronically, he sent me those, but, um, he did not send me the, the actual sketch plan, um, sketch map for the subdivision, and it was one of my tasks that I need to follow up with him on.
Okay, um, and one thing I would like to try and determine, and we can address this when we meet with him again, but if you're able to try it on the channel beforehand, it would be helpful on whether he, he's going to be agreement with the ordinance on the boundary. I really don't want to have to get, um, you know, a replay of all of that nonsense, um, whatever that was, last year or whatever. Um, I'm hoping they're settled, if we can find it out, it'd be great. Um, or, or later will be better. Um, so, yeah, so, I don't know if you can see.
If you want to see, you, you slide to the, yep. And then just lay it out and we've got it.
Yeah, so this, I believe, um, okay, I'm not giving you, because I think, um, this is the subdivision plan, I believe that was submitted to Act fifty. I don't know any difference from any you've seen before. Um, it seems to be over good in from last year, so it might be the same as what we've seen before, I'm not sure. Uh, the one thing that is new, I believe, at least to me, is this, um, what we call an interface site. You know. Okay, so the two, so the site now, you know, weathered delineation, I can operate, they're making vocal copy to be known. Um, this is kind of interesting, people are actually basically the same. Oh, there's a little bit of that.
And I made it so you can see what you're showing.
You did, okay, cool. So one thing that is interesting about this that I certainly didn't know before, I saw it mentioned in the Act two fifty permit, is they were able to identify, uh, pre-contact archaeological site on the property.
And that I didn't.
Yeah, so that's pretty cool, like an ancient Indian site, I don't know what, um, what they impale. Same, I think that's in the Act fifty.
They will mention this. And then, I, I was just trying to locate a recording to.
Go slide a little more over.
Yep.
Nice.
But last, it's got to be down near the pond. Yep, through the pond.
So that's going to be interesting. Um, and one of the things we've discussed is, you know, when this comes to us again, we, we kind of mentioned it in the past, but a subdivision with benefits from part of, in my opinion, and so we're working on. Um, this here is all prime ag soil. So that's something that we're going to want to work at too.
The original that was a part of with mold hydrant in it.
Right.
But it's not functional.
Right. It's not about six feet down. But that could be something that gets very, very, um, and we have some delineated levels here. Um, quite, quite a lot of the property, but. So. Let's go see, uh, this one is the, um, level and survey. Uh, the, the, the thing, I think the site plan just has kind of everything all, um, so, um, and what we can notice here, I think that's irrelevant to, to today and for us, is the area that was highly contested last year with the well is, you know.
I mean, I.
The area is, is in the welling area.
Yeah.
Um, so that'll be, I, I believe it will be slowly detected in the land, in the permit, I think we accept. So that will be in the clearing. Uh, hopefully. So, okay, so that's what we got from the Garrow's behalf of driveway there. So, no, on this plan, um, you don't have the driveway identified, and sort of, well, we're going to probably immediate identify?
Yeah.
For our permitting process. Um, but I don't know exactly what we're going to see from, from yet, so.
Uh, John.
Uh, just, just on, on that, uh, he has enclosed in the application the, um, town highways approval of his proposed, um, entrance drive curb cut.
You have a map on it? Is there a map on it?
It's not on a map, it's just on a form.
Right, is there a map on the form?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll take a look at that later, later if you come, you know. Andy, you have something?
Yeah, I, um, when I first saw the proposed permit, um. I had some questions about the delineation of wetlands and I spoke with Zapata Karaja, uh, who's the wetlands. Um. Uh. Expert, uh, for this area. And this pertains to where the access would be off the town road. Um. And she said that this permit is only for the subdivision. That for any kind of development of the property, including. Uh, the creation of a driveway. Uh, they'd have to return to Act two fifty for an amendment to the permit. And when I asked her about, uh, how they would deal with the. Uh, any proposed access through the wetland. Her response was essentially that they would first. Look to see if there is a way to access the property without going through the wetland. And if that wasn't possible, then they would look for a place that would be, um. Have the least potential impact on the wetland, which could be, it wasn't, you know, saying definitively. But it could be where the existing, um. There's an existing route. Uh, by the barn. Uh, that might end up being the more. Or the least damaging, uh, route into the lot because it already exists. And I mentioned all this only because since the location of a, of a. Access road from the town road is going to be dependent. On, um, a determination in a further Act two fifty proceeding. Um, it might be hard for, uh, Mr. Garrett to specify where the. Access would be since he doesn't know at this time what the state would permit.
Yeah, I don't agree with that last statement, I agree with everything after that. But we require you identify the access, so it is a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. In my opinion, the state should have addressed the access in their index permit, but they did not. They couldn't prove that development. It's my opinion, right, you could have to identify. You shouldn't be allowed this subdivision, you can't get it. Um, that makes no sense, so in our, in our permitting, we are gonna ask him. To identify the access, and it's a little bit of like, uh. For him to actually do it, he'll need to go back to the state, and that's part of why, um. Uh, state has any paid, we have stuff in eight pounds. Uh, highway active permit or apparently has.
So, no, I understand that he'd be required to identify it, I guess my question is, what happens if the. Location that he identifies, the subdivision permit, ends up not being approved by the state in the subsequent. Act two fifty proceeding.
Yeah, I mean, that's a really. Kind of strangish thing about how this all works is that. There could be any number of things in our permit that the state doesn't include in their eventual amendment. Um. You know, I don't have an immediate answer to that, but I believe that construction can't begin until all parties are satisfied. So it might be a sort of like, you get the town permit, you go back to the state to get an amendment. They come up with requirements that require further amendment of ours. You know, it might be a. Something like that, so there.
Right, I do.
They're dependent on crap, like, they're both dependent on each other, so it's kind of like complicated.
I think we do have some standard language in our decisions that say if, uh. There's a requirement, uh, imposed by a state permit. Um. That makes a change in our permit, they have to come back to us.
Right.
Or something to that effect.
I believe. If I'm not mistaken, I believe, as you said earlier, Andy, there's a. Farm road with pulver and so on in place that goes from by this shop now. Which is to be burned, out across to that area out there. For the subdivision. Yeah, so they, they might accept that as a, uh, action.
They might, we just don't know.
Right, yeah, we'll take a look at it later.
No, I'm just saying, if some of this, if this is not involved, don't construct and authorize. Here it is, it's already required, he wants. The do, he's, the power will be settled to go back to him. Uh, they talk about, uh.
They're going to be in the south.
Uh. The class two wetland for fifty foot buffer zone. They can't be swat, um, gotta stay undisturbed. Uh. Presentation soil, including, I'm letting you construction, or we.
Yeah, well, they were getting more.
Right, I'm just saying.
Let me see.
The primary soil. Uh. Yeah, basically the farmland has to be maintained, this is what it lies. And the, uh. Archaeological, it seems to be, it's the old stone fence. With the way I'm reading the description, which means that he has to put a road and.
Well, we'll, we'll.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'll have to go back to them, to do anything more. All right, so I'm gonna move on, just in time here, um. Back to where we are with Act two fifty, um. I think around something that came from, you know. We need more of a.
Yeah, it's like about like, they went after the flash and it was like.
Yeah, and there was something.
You don't want to fortify, you want to fortify, you're allowing no, no, uh.
I haven't looked and seen where, um, what legislation changed up or whatever, but it looks like maybe the word. Or they're trying to point that out, I'll look into it. It happened, looking. Uh, other thing is that maybe you're having some, I've communicated with Act two fifty. Also about the store's acquisition of the Meadow. And the area, I think I'll have to check back in, uh, but where you have been in contact with your owner. That very likely in Act two fifty is not required, so I'll have to see what that is and put that to you. Um. I think that's it for, for funds and updates. Um, I'll move on to, uh, subdivision proposal. I'll go for the record that we have, uh, approved and signed. The decision, approval of recall subdivision tonight. Um, and I'll be communicating with the owner about that, um. And I believe they may need to send that out. But we'll have to. We'll have to wait until it comes, let's try to figure the timing. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll take it if you think at some point about how we do that here on the town. Um, you are gonna need them to sign it, to co-sign it, um. And I can't remember if you do that before, but I think we need to have that done before we send it out to you. Um.
Yeah, I, I have also, uh, today, I'm just looking at the, um. Emails, um, Dawn Cole was asking again, uh, if, if a decision had been made, but, um. It sounds like.
Right, I, I did get a call from her, um. If we had, um, asking if we had made a decision, I told them that we hadn't ever left afternoon. But we were likely to by this evening, um, so, uh, we have now made that decision. And, uh, I think they'll be pleased, and I will recommend. And this is our baby viewers, you know, so if we call them out, we can tell them it's been done. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Stay, probably get you?
Yeah. So, like, um, um, I'll never try to get out of here, you know, or, uh, I think we can do it. Um. I don't have any good business, um. I'll finish this, the subdivision, they're gonna update. Um, I have checked in with Cavendish, but I haven't heard back on where they are with their profit. Um. My guess is it depends on their dust. Uh, I did finally hear back after a reminder from the regional planning commission. Uh, what they're, they're offering, things here, whatever. Um, they're a little bit back off, you know, and, um, they're surprised, yeah. But they just, and I, I, all right, this week is a little hectic, I haven't had a chance to read it yet. But I believe it's a kind of template that we could work out, that I thought, um. Um, so now have a template, you have a very useful kind of commission, and we have a template, and all you can think of. And I, I suspect that's a very rough place to start, but at least, I think. You get my ideas, yeah, like, I, I still think, um. A good place to start, another, but the authority is looking around that. We can, we can follow, it's, it's easy to go by. I haven't had a chance, I think I was gonna start a good deal with it, but I don't think it's.
Right, have we, uh, have we heard anything on one oh three down here? Down toward Beach Mall, I'm sure. This is the driveway in and.
Uh, okay, we'll be, we'll, we'll come back to that. So, that's where we are with subdivision. Uh, does anybody else have anything they, you know, you want to turn in, you know? Okay. So we'll, we'll get started on this. Uh, I mean, we'll leave this later. Um. All right, we'll put, put cover power, if you can add anything, so. I have no idea what's happening down there, so. Um. I believe the question is, probably the faith, if anybody. There's, there's, we're, we're, we're expedition down there. Well, they should. Oh, okay, they're putting in a new road off of, uh, one oh three.
Yeah, I, I did, uh, I did drive by and have a look, um, and then I checked the property. Um. I mean, I, I'm not quite sure who's responsible for permits for access roads. I mean, in the sense it's the town highway.
Hey, hey, this would require a state permit, state permit. But we, we don't have to touch that, but we could ask the state whether they did receive one.
Okay, right, I will, I will follow up with the state then.
The other excavator is up on one fifty five that we had trouble with there. Ah. Andy, Malala property.
Oh, um. You, you see where it was?
Yeah.
You mean it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know your name, that's great.
I don't, I don't heard the name, but.
Yeah, okay.
I, I dragged it to the ZS.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see detrends though, I guess, I'm not sure.
Yeah, detrends, but you give them that if you're able to, oh, I'm not pretty sure. Cause I see the driveway goes in, then goes up the hill, and they had a clearing up on top.
Uh-huh.
That takes a longer helping. Before we, we're. All right, well, we'll, we'll hear about that, um. Anything else? Maybe that's not he's. I think the law, if you, I guess it's called, if you don't think it's, it's too much, you know. I think you're talking about the law and green down, I think it's, uh.
You know, basically down, they, they shut down, it was tits logging. And he shut down because, uh. The landing he was using, um, was completed. And he didn't have any more landings, there's.
It's a big operation.
Few.
Right.
And, uh, two or three more landings going, yeah. But he didn't wanna, he didn't wanna have to do them in the winter time. So, you know, go this summer, he'll go up in and build a couple more landings and then.
Because we're gonna do, uh, there are two down, down here. I mean, they're, they might be born it, but not as far as, but, no, how?
They will have dollar road.
Not yet.
No, they won't be.
Oh, no, they won't, much more than the people in the hotel.
Man, they, they go down, they go down, yeah. Because they.
Well, I'm just saying, whatever, however.
Yeah, that area, down down area. Yeah, it's up off either.
It's a pretty big operation.
And. And they're gonna have at least two, if not three, burned, burned up that way.
Oh, yeah.
It's, well.
Have they burned on the video?
There'll be, not, but I was going to Greendale Road and one fifty five. The government, that, yeah, they do that, or three, and then they, they're gonna be burning up there, or what they end up doing.
John, did you see the select report where the, uh. The, uh, that board is.
It's, uh, more.
Oh, I saw Martino with Kenfield.
Right, you're talking about the sale?
Uh, no, they were talking about the burns, the logging, uh, the, uh. All the trails and.
Are you letting me?
Sort of in contact or recreating with, uh.
I think it's Phil Grant here.
They were together, but they had mass, well, the, the logging and burn.
And we're gonna deal with it, they want to have copies of that.
That's one side of the property that we, or I think.
I'm trying to remember, I forget, well, interesting, they spoke about.
That, yeah, I'll check it.
Or here.
Their property, well, you know, like. The, the, where, where you guys. I was looking at that, you know. You know, right, right, right. Oh, and I wrote, I was like, oh, maybe you're older than everything, I was scared, cause every single one of them has a house on the way into the block, yeah.
Well, I think, I think the one that, well, the gone is Kevin. Kevin at the transfer site, it's daughter. Is in the house on, on, on Robert Hill.
All right, well, we'll get, we'll get it, it doesn't matter, so I think that's about it, anybody got anything else, can anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, it is seven forty eight, meeting adjourned.
Oh, sorry, we didn't.
Regular, regular.
We didn't set the next, uh, meeting date.
New one.
So the. Sixteenth.
Yeah. Oh. I got that. Well, the fact of the matter is, um, um, that, yeah, we're in the, but everybody's still here, um. I don't wanna do the sixteen. Um. That's April break, we're kiddos.
Well, you're no fun.
All right, April fun period. We wanna change it? How about the phone fair, cause it's a kind of fun, working, there's something, uh, there, there shouldn't be anybody outside of meetings that, right? Yeah. To one time adjustment, would that be okay with you all?
What date are you looking at?
Looking at the twenty third, which is the fourth, when you say, so like there. Cause I, I, you guys have a meeting, I'm definitely. Now, one beach, I say, you're trying to move on. So, I was prepared again, but. He was getting, yeah, you're probably sweet like that, yeah.
Oh, the, the twenty third is agreed, is it?
What's that?
The twenty third is agreed.
I'm okay with the point there, is that okay with everybody else?
Yeah, at this point anyway.
Okay with me?
I need to find out about some of this, can't predict something else, I'm down.
Yeah, it worked for me, it's great, it's great, thank you. All right, you go, well, I'm gonna be there, you know. All right, now we're adjourned.
All right, I've got a question here, um, for the, no, no.
Oh, different.
Were we adjourned? Are we adjourned?
You got it. What if it does email?